Okay, since Cox didn't get started, well, please join me. Pardon me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, clerk, please call a roll.
Okay, trustee Mavka. Trustee Jones.
Here.
Trustee Sluse.
Here.
Trustee Bowden.
Yep.
Trustee Sturba.
Here.
And trustee Hudson.
Here.
All right, public comments.
Nancy Cross, here about Christmas in the village. I've sent Peter texts and emails and haven't got a response back. Does anybody in this room know the difference between a commission and a committee? You should.
I don't know the exact definition.
The commission was formed, one trustee, and the rest were citizens from the community that wanted to see the businesses thrive that day. And it's under the village so that we could collect private money from businesses and community members, and we covered that day for the insurance. Under the mayor, he has now appointed people that, Julie, do you want to be on it? Nick, when you ask. He forced to be on it. His own employee doesn't want to be on it, and we're continuing. I said-
Did I ever say I didn't want to be on it?
You didn't answer, you just stared at me.
Well, it's not that I didn't want to be on it, but there's a past that I wasn't sure if it was going to work out. So it had nothing to do with if I wanted to be on it or if I didn't want to be on it.
Moving on. So, this year started, he sent a text, which I was kind of throwing back because the mayor is usually not involved in Christmas in the village. And the reason right now I'm standing here is because the businesses need this, and it doesn't seem like somebody wants it to happen. Sent a message to me, is the meeting going to take place? Never has the mayor gotten involved. It's usually Mike communicates with the, are we having the meeting, what are we doing? Never since April did he answer me back on what I sent him. Waited for the election, I was removed. I don't care, but I do care that this is going to go down the drains. I know his first move for that two months was to go to the chambers, see if they wanted it, didn't want it. Was told that he wanted to cancel it. Mike asked me, he didn't even ask Mike if he should, who he should put on, remove. Got a message from Mike, hey, can you come bring me up to speed? I don't know what's going on. Spent two and a half hours with you. Thought it was under control. Tammy's here, she doesn't feel she has the right to speak because she's not a citizen in the village, but she has every right to be up here too, speaking. It's not going well. So I reached out to the mayor, he responded back to that email. Had a meeting with him for 45 minutes, thought we had gotten it covered, came to Christmas in the village meeting, thought we had covered. Wake up Friday morning, Jamie's doing her own thing. Own thing. The information's wrong. The village is not hosting the, it's here, but it's a sponsorship just like every other business, but somehow the logo is ending up in everything, like this is the village. It's to promote the businesses. I don't know if you guys know this is going on. I'm not the only business, we own two businesses, whether you guys like it or not, the Cross has owned two businesses in this town, and I believe if you look, we own the oldest business in this town. The second oldest business is not happy with the way it's going. You walked in there, Peter, on Friday. Did you compliment them at all when you were in there, or acknowledge the business? Going to answer?
No, keep going, public comment.
Okay, the answer's no, the answer's no. I want to know where this is going, I'm trying to help Tammy get the train back on the track, and every time we turn around, pretty sure the strings are being pulled by him with Jamie. Asked him in a text to just stay out of the way, and haven't heard back. Are we going to destroy this event, or is it going to stay on the track? Crickets. Gary, you know how good the event is for your business, your daughter's business. I mean, it's, I'm just shocked that I'm asking for a response and we have crickets from this. It's for all the businesses, not just chamber members, all the businesses in the town. So how's this going to be handled? I thought we didn't even, I didn't even want to be here, but I will not let this event go under.
I appreciate that the work that the committee has done, and I think the event is going to come off very well.
But why, like the text, the flyer you have up is wrong, please take it down. The flyer's still up, Jamie shared it three times today. I don't understand, and that's why I'm standing right here. And I guess we stand here until I get an answer. Are you going to let Tammy run this event, or are you and Jamie going to keep sabotaging it?
We're not sabotaging it. You were very concerned that we didn't have a flyer for the-
Yeah, so we had it-
-open house, so we made one, and now you're upset about it.
And I should have brought the flyer. We were upset that it was behind, but you threw a flyer together on black and white paper copy, and people are like, it's not, the businesses weren't all there, the information's wrong, and the village logo's on there. If you're going to put logos, you've got to put every business on there.
I told Tammy that when she gets the one, send it to me, and we'll put everything up for her.
I think she's going to handle that.
Okay.
I will hand deliver it to you.
Thank you.
I just want to, I mean, the business owners are upset. I love the crickets from the mayor on this. What is the plan for next year?
Well, we've got a wrap-up meeting in January, and we'll figure it out from there.
He's not dying.
Steve Cross, 619 East Walnut, Peatone. Just kind of follow-up on what Nancy was saying. You know, we started this event back in 2015, kind of built it from the ground up, and we created a true commission at that time, which was made up of one village trustee and members of the community, and school, and everybody else, and we brought everybody together, and we created this great event. I mean, it's grown every year. I kind of agree that, or I don't kind of agree, I totally agree, that the way this thing is formed now, it's not a commission. It's totally changed, it's become a more of a village board committee, and that was not the intention from the original start. And I think we've lost a little bit of focus, and, you know, it seems to me like just about everything else that goes on, it's Peter-focused. You know, Peter, your ego has just gotten so big that I just don't understand it. And everything circles back to you, March Dental, blah, 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 just like a lot of the events here, everything's got to kind of have your name in it, and that's not the idea. It's about all of the businesses in this community, it's about the community as a whole. That's all I'll say about that. Have a question for you, a direct question. Do you know anybody by the name of Heath Wright?
Heath Wright?
Heath Wright. No?
Do not.
Matt?
No.
Something that's really bothered me about this whole downtown streetscape was the way that Upland Design was originally hired. So on the November 9th meeting, you came to the board and you said, you know, I'm thinking about this downtown streetscape, I think, you know, it fits in with the TIF and the Business Development District, and I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. Amy and I have talked to three different firms, and we've heard back from two, but we're kind of leaning toward this Upland Design. Also in that meeting, you mentioned that you had a friend that was a landscape architect, so I don't know if that friend has anything to do with Upland Design or not, but regardless, at that meeting, you know, you'd said, well, this is going to be like a 1.5 to $2 million project to do this downtown streetscape. We're going to, I, you suggested to fund this entire thing through the Aqua money, through the sale of the water and sewer to Aqua, to use that money to fund this project and to pay it back through the Business Development Fund and the TIF, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. At that meeting, you stated that, you know, we generate somewhere between $17,000 and $19,000 a month in this Business Development Fund right now. I don't want to spend the whole thing, let's look at having maybe $10,000 a month toward this payback, correct?
Correct.
You said that, you know, at 1.5, $2 million, at $10,000 a month, we're looking at 17 years to pay it back. Correct?
Okay.
So now we move forward, next meeting, November 23rd, there's a village board meeting, and lo and behold, we hire Upland Design. I don't understand how a 1.5, at that time, 1.5, $2 million contract can be awarded without any request for proposals, without any input from the village board. It's Peter and Amy saying, hey, we had two, I like this one, let's give them the contract for $38,000 and change, I believe it was. But not only that $38,000 in change, but this company, on the bidding process and everything else, they're going to be making considerable money on the back end if it goes through, correct?
If we choose to use them as a-
Well, you've used, you've already chosen to use them, don't, you've already chosen to use them, you've already spent $38,000 of village money-
Correct.
Okay.
That was for the proposal.
For proposals, all right. But every indication has been made that if this moves forward, they're going to be the people, is that not correct?
Upland Design is a landscape architect, they're not a, they don't build anything.
But if you look back at the November 9th meeting, the comments made by Peter was that they would also handle the bidding and, I can get the exact words if I look at my phone, but the bidding and the construction process of that bid.
If we chose to.
Yeah.
We're going to use Robinson.
Okay, so let me, let me continue, okay? But I still don't understand how this firm was hired without any input from the board and any widespread request for proposals. I mean, this isn't a small project, and it's turned into a $6.5 million project, not just a 1.5 to $2 million project. So now to pay it back at $10,000, $10,000 a month, we're looking at 54 years, not 17 years. That money from the sale of the Oc to Aqua, of the water and sewer, when that was sold, it was agreed by the board, it was not written in stone, I understand that, but that money was to be used, to be invested, the interest from that investment was to be used to help the general fund, and also be used to promote any economic development possibility. I don't see how a $6.5 million streetscape can be considered an economic development possibility. There's no way that that is going to generate enough income to even come close to paying back that debt. Period, there's no way. I own a business, I own a building, I own two businesses and a building downtown. I would love to see the downtown cleaned up. We have that $10,000 to $17,000 a month in the Business Development Fund. I've asked this board, what would it cost to fix the streets, fix the sidewalks, and change the streetlights? Never gotten an answer to that question. Has that question ever been looked at?
It has been.
And what was that number? And what was that number?
We don't have it yet. You know, we've given it to Robinson to do, they're doing the surveys of the streets, they're doing, you know, to get a number, we've got to, they've got to do their-
Well, I've seen them out surveying, I've seen them looking at the streets, I've seen them doing all of that.
We know that stuff doesn't take overnight.
Troy, how long will it come, will it tell when you have that number?
What are we talking about, an estimate?
The number, an estimated number to fix the streets, the existing streets, repair any bad existing sidewalks and change the streetlights. Not widen the sidewalks, plant numerous trees and flowers, and put up a gateway arch and columns, and create this legacy that's being promoted.
Well, we haven't come up with that number, but we can.
Has, has the board asked you to create that number?
They've asked us to look at other, you know, things with the streetscape.
Okay, but the mayor just told me that he's asked Robinson for that number.
Well, we're in the process of looking at the survey-
See, this is, this is, there's so much smoke and mirrors that it just, it baffles me. I want all of the residents of this village to be aware that if this board commits $6.5 million of the Aqua money, it's gone. They're not going to get it back in a short period of time because there is not a return on that investment. You look out at I-57, you'll look at the proposed travel center and hotel, that whole I-57 corridor, that's the place that money needs to be focused, because we have a TIF there, that's a very young TIF, that's a TIF that's going to just explode, that you're going to be able to recoup any investment that you put into that back in a short period of time. This is a very old new TIF in the downtown, but it's so new with old property. The difference between TIF 1 and TIF 2 is TIF 2 has no development, so any development in that TIF is going to create a tremendous amount in that TIF fund. The TIF 1, it's going to take forever for that to grow. Yes, we did it, we started it, there's money in it, but not enough money to support a $6.5 million streetscape. Maybe a little bit of money to help with some facade program downtown, to help clean up some of the buildings downtown. This is where, to me, as a resident, as a business owner, as somebody that's been downtown for the last 33 years, every day, that's where the focus needs to be. This grandiose plan is ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous, and people need to open their eyes and realize that. This is, this is some, I don't know, I just, it doesn't make any sense. We're not ready for that. We're ready to clean up the downtown, we're ready to fix the streets, fix the sidewalks, change out the streetlights, that is probably going to be a very, more manageable plan. Thank you.
Thank you, anybody else? All right, moving on to the consent agenda, there's just a couple items in the consent agenda, any of the trustees want to remove either one of those items? If not, let's see, the payroll, pay period ending 10/30, 21, $31,633. Accounts payable, general fund, $27,547.65. Capital improvement fund, $6,412.99. Business Development District, $1,299. Total for all those funds, $35,259.64. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Sturba.
Okay, roll call vote, trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Sturba.
Yes.
Trustee Sluse.
Yes.
Trustee Hudson.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
Present.
All right, moving on to staff committee reports, administrator, anything?
Just a couple quick things, we're working on updating the website, so we're looking for pictures of the community that would show kind of something that would make you think of Peatone, so, or just something nice or with crowds, so if anybody's just got some pictures that they want to share, maybe that would be featured on the website, just let me know, send them to me, if you're willing to have them on the website. If there's any businesses in the downtown area who's interested in submitting a letter of support, we're going up for a grant for the downtown, and we've already gotten several letters of support, and thanks for those, so if any other businesses would be interested in, in writing a letter, just let me know, I can give you a sample. We're trying to set up blood drives for 2022, so working with the fire department and maybe have it located there this year, so we'll get dates to you when they're confirmed.
How was the last one?
It was good, it wasn't as highly attended as our two previous, but it was good.
Do you want to give an update on the second street?
So, the, the only thing holding us up is the pole that is leaning in between the two buildings, and we've had come, had come out finally and take a look at it, and they told us it wasn't their pole. I'm waiting to get confirmation from them to determine then what our next step will be, if it's a privately-owned pole, we'll have to figure out who owns it, or shore it up ourselves, and then we can get started with the demo.
All right, any questions for the administrator? If not, moving on with reports, Troy, do you have anything?
No.
My comments, just want to thank everybody for enjoyable holiday, Halloween weekend. Thanks to Chambers Plumbing and Cornerstone Coffee for sponsoring the truck or treat, and thanks to our Peatone police for keeping everybody safe during the holiday. I wanted to welcome new business, Simple Expressions Boutique to downtown, sounds like they had a successful opening weekend. And that is it. No old business, new business. Motion to waive the canvassers and solicitors permit fee for selling Boy Scouts, spaghetti dinner tickets. So, at our last AOC meeting, they decided anybody who wanted a waiver for a fee, any kind of nonprofit, that the board would, you know, decide that, so this basically is waiving the fee for the Boy Scouts to go out and sell spaghetti dinner tickets.
A motion to waive the fee.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Sluse.
Okay, roll call vote, trustee Bowden.
Yes.
Trustee Sluse.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Hudson.
Yes.
Trustee Sturba.
Yes.
All right, item B, it's a motion to appoint Melissa Kulash to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We've had an opening since trustee Hudson moved up to the board, so I asked Melissa to join the Planning and Zoning Commission, and she agreed to, so we just need a motion to approve that.
Motion.
Second. Moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Hudson.
Okay, roll call vote, trustee Jones.
Yep.
Trustee Hudson.
Yes.
Trustee Sluse.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
Yes.
And trustee Mavka, I mean, excuse me, trustee Sturba.
Yes.
All right. Next, I'm going to kind of turn it over to Troy, so downtown phase one parking plan is the railroad street parking, oh, I'm sorry, did I skip something? Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Item C, review board committee assignment, so I switched things up a little bit on the committees, so just, we gave you all a copy that you can see. Shelley got moved to the downtown committee, and Gary got moved to the Public Works, and Nick got put on the building committee, and I think that is, yeah, we took the pad off of the Public Works Committee. So, that is that. So anyway, moving on to item D, the downtown phase one draft parking plan, so we've had Troy and Robinson Engineering out and about, surveying the streets downtown and doing core samples, and I wanted them to bring this draft to the board to see, there was some concerns, whether everything would fit in that area, and, I don't know, Troy, you want to just kind of walk through the design a little bit?
Sure, and this is contingent on seeing railroad being okay with the distance that we're showing it from the tracks. This was, it was based on what the lease agreement shows and the dimension they showed on that in their drawing, so it's only, the fence is really only 10 feet from the tracks, so we'll have to obviously confirm that. If that distance has to change, the layout will have to change too. But this would be the best-case scenario where railroad street would still be a two-way street, this is very similar to the original plan that was done in the planning study. So there'd be two-way on railroad street, which would be reconstructed, the sidewalk along railroad, the west side of railroad street, and then a kind of near North Street, the one-way entrance to the parking area with the angle of parking, so the parking area will only be one-way going south. And then, we're trying to just leave as much room as we can for the center landscape median, right now it's six feet, and because of, there's very little storm sewer, small storm sewers out there, considering not putting curb along the landscape median to allow water to kind of drain, like a bio-swell type area to help with drainage, and just want to see, you know, how, what the board felt about that. Maybe wheel stops there if we don't put a curb there. And then, you know, in the landscape median area, there'd be trees and decorative lighting, the sidewalk to get across railroad street with the crosswalk, and we have to, we're kind of going to have to see how to deal with the comment poles that are already in the street, they're pretty much right in the, where the curb line will be, so there's really nowhere for them to go, so I believe they're probably going to end up staying there, but we'll have to talk to comment about that. It's, this is very, this preliminary layout, we still have to figure out slopes and drainage, but this, you know, this is the first step.
Would it be better if we just got rid of the island section altogether and just put a curb along the road like Mantino has, with the one-way in, one-way out, that you can park on an angle both ways? Because I, I'm guessing like when we lease, it's going to be, we lease half of this from the railroad, I bet, the island? Right?
The lease?
Yeah. How much of, how much of this do we own, I guess?
Yeah, you probably own about half of it, at least about half of it, if I remember.
Like, not saying like they wouldn't give us a lease in 10 years, but just in case, like, it'd be terrible if something happened in 10 years, say, well, we're not going to lease this because we're going to use it for something else, and we lose half an island. At least if we put a curb in the front with like the walkways and stuff, you get the double parking, so if something like that does happen, at least we still have the same parking, we're not investing all that. That's just my feeling.
Are you talking about parking only on one side instead of both sides?
Both sides, but if like the railroad comes in in 10 years, say, hey, we're not going to, you know, or it becomes so much that they say, well, we'll lease it to you, but it'll be this much money now, or something where it's not feasible to, or, you know, we can still use the parking and not have to reconfigure, or not losing like an island or something like that.
Oh God, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Without the drive aisle coming to that side.
Yeah, without the whole island, just put a curb right around the front, because it's kind of like Mantino has, with like three or two or something like that, I guess. And then, you have one way going in, one way going out, they still have a two-way street, you can still get in it, but one way in, one way out, and parking all goes one way. So you, so you pull in on the north side, all the diagonals will be facing from, I guess it'd be southeast or southwest to northeast.
How long is the lease, you know? Is it?
It's five years.
Five years? Is it five years, something changes? Then that'll save some money too, I guess.
Any other comments from the board?
Just for what it's worth-
Just for what it's worth, um, in the past, when you leased land from the railroad, um, they usually wanted a firm five, but they would allow another two or three extensions.
Yeah, I don't anticipate them, I mean, over the history, we've been renting this lot for years and years, I mean, I understand we're making a, we'd make a significant investment in this, but it's really a landlocked parcel, the railroad doesn't own the land, you know, we own the building to the north and the, uh, land to the south is owned by somebody else, so I don't know.
Thing I worry about is like, like Bartel's Building down there, like, they're there for how many years and then they up their rent, and they wanted more for insurance and stuff like that, and now they're not there anymore. I'm just afraid, put like, you know, say you put all this money into it and in five years, somebody else is in charge and saying, well, no, we're gonna want this much money. You know, thinking like, well, they're gonna pay it because they put all this money into it. I guess I'm just thinking if you keep it simple and keep costs down and stuff like that.
Any other questions or comments?
Is that on the north part of the property that we're leasing?
East.
It's the, uh, yeah, east next to the track, so we purchased the, uh, western kind of half of that parking lot, but they wouldn't sell us the whole parking lot, they wanted to keep like twenty feet of it. For leasing, so probably would be like right where that median is.
We could also not do trees, they can do like flower pots or something like that, something that's easier to remove in winter time, cause this would be a pain to follow in snow in winter time and everything like that, especially if cars are parked there, we do something like that, then at least it's easier to clear the lot.
Would this lot end up being flat, right, as opposed to the way it is now from the railroad tracks that drains down towards railroad street?
It would, it would, we, that's what we gotta figure out, but it would most likely stay the same where it would drain towards railroad street, because that's where the storm sewers are.
Would the water dissipate as opposed to creating a river down through there?
Um, well, that's why we kind of talked about putting that bio-swell in the middle of the median, cause it's kind of, I'll get it collect there, then we could have a drain to get it to the storm sewer. But then a lot of it, you know, it depends how much we want to tear into the old storm sewers, which are pretty small, and then there's a water main run along there, so you don't, it's gonna be hard to tear, tear up and put new storm sewer with separation requirements. So, yeah, it's gonna be challenging.
I think Mantino has like a curb along here, within the road, I think is flat, and they have parking blocks around there, so the water does flow off and then goes into the curb.
Yeah.
I think I believe that's how it is. So then it wouldn't really pool up the water, they would just kind of roll.
Any other comments? All right, well, I'm gonna refer this to our downtown committee and they can look at it and take your comments and, um, Troy will give you some direction, I guess, okay? All right, uh, E, overview and discussion regarding economic interest statements gift ban act and ethics requirements, so uh, this came up, the legislature passed, uh, some new laws as far as ethics, and also the economic interest statements that all of us have to fill out every year, and I just wanted everybody to get an update, so Michael has agreed to, uh, to give us a little update on what's involved in all these things, so I'll let you take it from there, Michael. All right, thank you, mayor. Is this with the era? Yeah, it's good. All right, thanks, so, uh, because we had a lighter agenda tonight, as the mayor said, he suggested we take advantage of that and I give a quick overview of a few ethics issues relevant to board members. And in particular, uh, you know, quick overview on prohibited political activities, gift ban act, and these new requirements for economic interest disclosure statements. So the, the, the basic principles, and, and there's also other aspects of, uh, ethics which we're not gonna touch on tonight, in particular conflicts of interests and the, uh, compatibility of office issues, um, maybe we could catch up on that at a different time, but that's something I go over with the new trustees in their training, so that's probably fresh on everyone's mind. Um, so the basic principles of local government ethics, uh, these core principles are listed here, public office should not be used for political gain, public office should not be used for financial gain or personal benefit, uh, public officials employed should not be influenced by gifts or gratuities, and, um, transporta- transparency of potential conflicts and disclosure of, of conflicts. At the state level, law covers these topics in the State Officials and Employees Ethics Act, and each municipality under that law is required to incorporate those into their village code. Uh, Peatone, uh, many years ago has incorporated the act at chapter thirty-eight of the village code. So the first section of all this, uh, and I gave you a handout with the PowerPoint on it, really concerns the, uh, prohibited political activities, and I, I'm not gonna get into a bunch of detail, but I, I gave you a lot of text, so you can kind of read that at your leisure and, um, and, and kind of familiarize yourself with it, but the gist of the prohibited political activities sections is that, uh, whether we're talking village employees or you as public officials, um, that you don't want to be conducting political activities, uh, during compensated time in the case of employees, or in your, uh, case, um, as, as part of your official duties, okay? So there's a list of things, uh, in here on, uh, page, page eight, which starts this list of prohibited political activities. The types of things that you can't do while doing official duties, soliciting contributions, uh, organizing political meetings, um, soliciting votes, uh, doing petitions, et cetera. Going on further down the list on page nine is one that often comes up in the local government context, and that's referendums. So, which, as an example, if you had a referendum, uh, that the village board was, um, had authorized to go on a ballot for a bond issuance, for instance. You know, you can, as an individual resident, voice, voice your support for a local referendum, uh, when you're out and about, uh, talking to residents, et cetera. Uh, but you can't do it as part of your official duties, so, um, we, we can't sit here and, uh, as part of your meeting, urge everybody to vote for or against a particular referendum. Municipalities can, under the election laws, provide factual information, so often, uh, when there's a referendum, that, you know, they'll make fact sheets available, how much, uh, are your property taxes gonna go up, should this pass, uh, for the average resident based on home value, et cetera, uh, that sort of thing. Does this apply to other taxing bodies' referendums? Yes, so, um, you, you, you know, same thing, it's kind of a blanket prohibition, so e- even if it's another taxing body, you can't urge a yea or nay as part of their official duties here. Okay. Okay, so again, uh, you're free to do it, um, when you're out and about, uh, representing yourself just as an individual, but, but not, uh, as part of your official duties. And so, um, one of the things, so if, uh, it commonly, if, if, if a municipality has put a referendum on the, on the ballot, what commonly happens is like an independent group will be organized that will do the hard work of, of getting signs out and, and urging that to be passed, that has nothing to do officially with the village. On page ten, you'll see, this is kind of the core of this, that we can't perform any of the activities on this list during compensated time, use municipal property or resources for campaign purposes. Uh, you know, you can't associate the village logo with, with campaign materials, can't direct employees to engage in these types of prohibited political activities, et cetera. Okay, uh, there are a couple of exceptions that are pretty obscure, um, but, but I did include them on slide eleven. All right, uh, so more, moving on to something that's probably more relevant to you on a, on a common basis is the gift ban act portion of the state law, and here, again, we're concerned about gifts from, what, what the, uh, what the act terms prohibited sources. And these are people seeking official action from the village, so somebody seeking, uh, approval of a contract, zoning relief, vendors doing business with the village, uh, people conducting activities regulated by the village, such as business owners, bar owners, anyone who has interests that may be substantially affected by actions of the village, and lobbyists. Okay, uh, gift under the law is broadly defined and includes gratuities, discounts, entertainment, hospitality, loans, forbearance, et cetera, et cetera, anything having monetary value, uh, including cash, food and drink, honoraria for speaking engagements, um, those sorts of things. And, and the basic rule is, except as otherwise provided in the act, no officer, uh, of which you are, or employee shall intentionally solicit or accept any gift from any prohibited source, uh, or in violation of any federal or state statute, rule or regulation. And this, uh, ban importantly includes your spouses and your immediate family living with you, um, living with the officer or the employee. And it goes both ways, so prohibited sources are, are, uh, not allowed to offer or make a gift that violates the act, so they can be, uh, uh, guilty for, for making that offer to you. There are, as you might imagine, a number of exceptions in the act, uh, there's twelve listed exceptions. The first, the, I'm just gonna touch on a couple, but opportunities, benefits and services that are available on the same conditions as for the general public, so for instance, if there is a car dealership, it's giving out tickets to a baseball, baseball game, they're the first one hundred people that, uh, show up there on a particular day, uh, you are free to get that and accept it because any, anybody, uh, can get that, even though you regulate that car dealership as a business, that's not a prohibited gift because that's available to all members of the public on the same terms and con- uh, conditions. Anything that you pay market value for, uh, gifts from relatives, so this is pretty, the definition of, of what relatives are able to give, uh, gift and not be a prohibited source, so these are relatives who may be doing business with the village, or have some relationship that makes them a possible prohibited source, but because they're your relatives, they're accepted. Um, and again, you can see the list on page fourteen here, it's pretty broad, uh, but it does have its limits, so for instance, if your second cousin owns a business in town, uh, they're not covered by that relative exception, they can still be a prohibited source. Okay, um, another exception is personal friendship, and here we kind of look at the history, uh, let's say you and a friend have given gifts to each other since you were teenagers, um, so even if you guys are, you know, now successful adults and giving yourself each other nice gifts, uh, the history of that relationship, and if they're not seeking anything, uh, in particular from you, even if they have business with the village, uh, it may, may make them exempted from being a prohibited source. Food or refreshments not exceeding seventy-five dollars in a calendar day, provided they're consumed on the premises. So, uh, as an example, if I was at a bar with a couple of board members and, and bought a couple of rounds, uh, and, and those rounds didn't exceed seventy-five dollars a person, that is not a prohibited gift despite, uh, my, my relationship as a vendor. You're able to give each other gifts and give staff members gifts, there's an exception for these, uh, intergovernmental and intergovernmental gifts, intra and inter. So, it, you know, if, if you feel moved to, uh, uh, give Amy or Karen a gift, uh, because you're doing such a great job or whatever, um, that you're allowed to and that's not a prohibited source, or they can give you gifts. And then lastly, items during the calendar year, so long as they have a cumulative value of less than a hundred dollars, so it's seventy-five dollars in a single day and a hundred dollars over the course of, of the year. So, uh, if, if there was a board practice where some of us went to a bar each, each week after the meeting, um, I wouldn't be able to buy rounds every, every week, because that ultimately would cause the, the hundred dollars to be exceeded. Okay, so, uh, you know, a lot of this is just common sense, um, but we take it seriously because the act has criminal penalties, so it's something that you always want to keep in mind. Uh, and just be cognizant of, and if you ever have questions, uh, you, you know, you can, through Amy, uh, have them channel to us and, and we're happy to give you feedback on what, how a particular situation may or may not be prohibited. I included a few examples, uh, the first one, uh, questions and examples, uh, the first one, uh, you're friends with the village receptionist, ask her to make campaign phone calls for you during lulls in her workday. So, the question is, can she do that? And the answer is no, that's a prohibited political activity, she's on compensated time, you shouldn't ask her, she should not do it, or you'd both be in violation. But she is free, for example, to make, uh, calls for you as a volunteer and away from village hall, uh, but only if she's doing it voluntarily and doesn't feel compelled to do it for job purposes. Village trustee stops at a gas station in the village to pick up a few items from the convenience store. Employee in the store tells the trustee, you can have a free cup of coffee because he appreciates the board's work and service to the community, uh, may the trustee accept the free cup of coffee. So here we have that, uh, seventy-five dollar exception, uh, you technically could accept that, um, but, uh, there's also this, this optics issue. And accepting gifts is, like, of that nature is typically not good, um, because the issue becomes whether the store owner is providing the cup voluntarily or feels pressured into providing it. If you end up in a dispute or code enforcement action with a particular business, they, they could spin that and say, you know, trustee comes in all the time and shakes me down for free coffee, et cetera, uh, it, it just is better off, uh, not done. Another example, homeowners association, a large, large subdivision in the village conducts an annual run for charity to raise money in memory of a police officer killed on duty. Police officer's family lives in the subdivision, they donate the procedure, proceeds annually to the police department to purchase optional safety equipment. There's a break-in in the subdivision, president of the association emails the police department asking for increased patrols in their subdivision and mentions the donations from the charity run, so is the donation allowed and may the police department increase patrols as requested? Donation is allowed as municipalities can accept gifts and donations that help to defray op- operational expenses and equipment, so, uh, you, you know, people commonly make all kinds of donations to, to villages. But, uh, wh- once the homeowners association has kind of tied that to this request to, to, uh, do these extra patrols, it becomes more problematic, so they're asking for some official action now and bringing up the fact that they've made these donations. Uh, so the proper thing in that case is, is for the police department to respond and say, you know, we're not, we're not gonna accept, we're not accepting these monetary gifts in order to, to give you a quid pro quo in the form of these increased patrols, um, we're not gonna do it based on the donations. Uh, but you can deliver services based on your standard operating procedures, objective data and identified public needs and governmental purposes, so you know, one breakup, break-in is probably not sufficient to increase patrols, but if there's an ongoing pattern of criminal activity or something that merits these increased patrols, you could do it regardless of the donations because it's part of your standard operating procedures. And the last example, I think, uh, your best friend since high school is also the village's computer services vendor, offers you and your family four White Sox playoff tickets valued at well over a hundred dollars each. Can you accept them? And, uh, the answer here depends on why they were offered, uh, is you doing it because you're friends or because the vendor services contract is up for renewal next month? If it is because you're friends and you have this long history, then yes, you're free to take them because it falls under that, that example of, uh, or that exception for, for these personal relationships. All right, and the last thing is, uh, the mayor mentioned, um, these economic interest statements, so you're all familiar, you get those cards each year, uh, those, uh, forms that you fill out for the county, that have six question, uh, that have certain questions on them about your, um, your, your financial business. And the idea behind these, um, is that, you know, they're trying to make sure that there's transparency, that you're, um, that, that you don't have, uh, prohibited interests with, uh, with certain firms or, or entities associated with the village. And just want to have a handle on an official record that you've self-disclosed on those subjects. So there was some legislation last year, um, as, as part of like a broader, uh, state, uh, ethics reform bill. It's intended to strengthen reporting and transparency, transparency measures concerning investments, assets and business relationships that are relevant to elected officials, so there's these six questions, that are, that are slightly different than what you've done in the past, um, and, and you'll do those for twenty twenty-two, where they're going to ask you about your assets, uh, that are valued in excess of ten thousand dollars. Uh, whether they're held individually, jointly with a spouse or jointly with a minor child, um, they're gonna ask you They're gonna ask you about, uh, your different sources of income of, of anything over seventy-five hundred annually from individual places for both you and your spouse. Ask you about creditors, uh, what units of government you hold office in. Lobbyists which you, with which you have an economic relationship and, uh, sources of different gifts that you may have received. So importantly, assets, uh, include things like stocks, bonds, mutual funds, exchange traded funds, et cetera. And investment real estate, they don't include, uh, things like your personal residence, uh, your personal vehicles, saving or checking accounts, bonds, notes, um, issued by federal or state local government, et cetera, college saving plans. So I've given you a one-page, uh, sheet that was created by the Illinois Municipal League that kind of outlines some of the new things, uh, and, and parameters regarding this economics, uh, interest statement. So, uh, because it's a little different than, than last year, we wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. And, uh, you don't have to do it for a few months yet, but you can start thinking about, uh, this and, and getting your papers in order and, you know, probably a lot of similar information that you've disclosed in your tax returns, so that will be helpful and the timing kind of coincides as well.
So is, is this gonna be like a, yes, I have values in excess of ten thousand dollars? Or yes, I do and I have to list every?
Yeah, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to list them. The act has the form in it and it's, you know, it's one of those, check the box and then list them out. So, uh, um, I haven't seen the official form yet and I don't know what it's gonna look like, but, um, it, you know, they're gonna wanna know those details. Uh, well, it's gonna come from the county. The state, the state has a form that they've outlined for, uh, for state employees, but the counties do it for all the local elected officials, um, and certain employees. And the secretary, the act also says the secretary of state is gonna put information and guidance on all this new stuff on their website. I checked today and did not see it, so it's probably not up yet. And the act's not even effective until January first, um, so I, I presume they're working on it and they'll get it up. And maybe we can even revisit it once there's more detail and we know what the county form is gonna look like. But it's something that will come from one of the county officials that you need to fill out and turn back into them.
Does that information become public information?
Uh, yeah, they are, they are available to people.
So basically you're throwing all your cards out for everybody in the world to think what?
Yeah, I mean, you're not putting, uh, you're not putting, uh, account numbers and stuff, but, uh, yes. It, it's, um, unfortunately one of the...
What if the stuff's in a trust?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. But, but I would guess it maybe if, if... What do you got? Assets in a trust, there we go. Assets in a trust based on the total value of the assets, either subject to the beneficial interest or from which income is to be derived for the benefit of the beneficial interest, regardless of whether distributions have been made. So yes, trusts are covered, they are viewed as, uh, subject, economic interest subject to disclosure. So it's just one of those, uh, not, less fun things about being an elected official.
So when you, when you see the new form come out or the new guidance, uh, we should give us a, an update, uh, because, you know...
Yeah, let's revisit this maybe after the first of the year when they have more materials available.
Has this met with much resistance from public officials?
Yeah, so, so, you know, the, these reporting requirements have been around for a long time. I, I, but they just kind of revamped it this year to make it a little more robust, I guess. And, and we don't get involved too much, uh, but occasionally, you know, officials will call us with particular questions about disclosing this or that. And we'll do our best to provide guidance, but, uh, the county people may have a better idea of what the compliance rates are, et cetera.
Any other questions from the board? All right, thank you.
Sure.
Questions on the press?
Hi.
Hi.
Can I get a copy of that parking plan? And then Amy, would you also forward me that presentation?
Sure.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Uh, any other correspondence, patients petition, anything else from the board? Uh, if not, we have to go into an executive session. It wasn't on our agenda, but this will be a closed session for the purpose of discussing employment discipline performance for dismissal of specific employees and no action will be taken on this tonight. So I'll need a motion to go into executive session.
Motion.
Second.
Both by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Sluse.
Okay, well, trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Hepburn?
Yes.
And trustee Sterbo?
Yes.